All right, good morning, everybody. I'll call to order the Board of Franklin County Commissioners meeting for Wednesday, July 29th. Can you roll call, please?
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Present.
Commissioner Howard?
Present.
Chair Waymire?
Present.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
All right, if you join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, that will be followed by the invocation led by Kathy Seimes of the Wellesley United Methodist Church. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. All right, Kathy, are you on?
I'm on.
Good deal, go ahead.
Okay, let us pray. Let us pray. We pray first for all of the citizens of Franklin County. We pray for those affected by COVID and those who are hoping to tamp down the spread. We pray for our law enforcement as they continue to do their good work across our county. And God, we pray for this group of commissioners and all of those who support our commissioners, that they would make good and right decisions as they have been elected to do. God, we ask your presence in this meeting as they move forward, whatever their agenda may be, God, make it be one that would glorify you in all ways. Put this in your hands, that your spirit may energize us and fill us and let us go about our days and weeks ahead as these decisions play out for our citizens. In your son's name we pray, amen.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving down the list to Correspondence and Organizational Business, the first item will be a proclamation that recognizes the 30th anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act. I will go ahead and read the proclamation. It states, whereas July 26th marked the 30th anniversary of the day President George H.W. Bush signed into law the Americans with Disabilities Act to ensure the civil rights of people with disabilities, and on September 17th, 2008, George W. Bush signed the ADA Amendments Act to reestablish the civil rights of people with disabilities. And whereas Senate Republican Leader Robert Dole from Kansas played a leading role in the ADA's development and passage, and whereas the ADA established a clear and comprehensive national mandate for the elimination of discrimination against individuals with disabilities. Whereas Franklin County believes all people with disabilities are equal citizens and continue to work to make its programs, services, and activities accessible and usable to individuals with disabilities, now therefore the governing body of Franklin County does hereby proclaim the 30th anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act by recognition and celebration, celebrating the progress that has been made and actively rededicate ourselves to the principles of equality and inclusion, signed this day, the 29th of July. So, anybody want to make any comments or motion to approve the proclamation?
Commissioner Howard, I'll make a motion to approve the proclamation.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
Commissioner Dickinson, I'll second it.
All right.
Commissioner Stottlemyre, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes. And our second Correspondence and Organizational Business item is to recognize Calmar for donating, for the donation of a terminal tractor to Franklin County Public Works. David or Derek, I don't know who wants to...
Colt, I'm going to let Paul Bean start this off.
Excellent, thanks.
Yeah, I am so thankful and appreciative of our partners at Calmar. Alan Wilson is a great friend of the community and a great leader for Calmar, and Calmar is a tremendous asset to Ottawa and Franklin County. And a few weeks ago, Alan reached out and said, you know, Paul, Calmar's got a piece of equipment here that we'd like to donate, can you help us identify where that might be helpful? And so I did a little research and sent them some options, and Alan and his team selected Franklin County as the recipient of a fantastic tractor that they built right here in Ottawa, Kansas, and Franklin County. And I cannot say enough about Alan and his team and the company. This is just one example of the support and the value they bring to Ottawa and Franklin County. And for them to make this gift of a tractor and all that, David, share a little bit about the impact it's going to have, but I know all of you joined me in saying thank you to Alan and the team at Calmar for their generosity and, you know, the fact that this rose to their mind that, hey, how can we help our area, how can we help our community speaks volumes about Alan and his leadership. So I, on behalf of FCDC and the county and the community at large, want to express deep, deep, deep appreciation to Alan. Your generosity, sir, is tremendous and incredibly helpful. And David, do you want to share a little bit? And then I think Alan, we'd love to have you say a few things, if you would, please.
David, we can't hear you.
I hit that red button, sorry about that. On behalf of the Franklin County Public Works and especially the staff out of the transfer station, I'd like to thank Calmar for this generous gift. We've been using our current Calmar Terminal Tractor at the transfer station six days a week since 2002. So we use it every day, all day long, and that tractor has performed great through the years, and we are extremely excited to receive this new tractor to help us continue our operation. On a personal note, I've always appreciated Calmar for being a great community partner, and this gift is just a reminder of their tremendous generosity. So I appreciate this gift and we'll put it to good use starting here in about half an hour, I take.
Yep. Alan, thank you, David. Alan, would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, it was, you know, again, we really like to try to make sure we're giving back to the community where we're located. We've been here for many, well over 70 years, so it's important for us to be able to give back to the community and was, you know, we were just thankful that the timing happened when it did and that, you know, Paul was very instrumental in helping us make this connection and find the use for the tractor and, you know, based on what we were going to be doing with it, I think this is a much better use for it. So I'm happy that the county had a need and we could help fulfill that need. So David, hopefully you guys get a lot of good use out of it. You know, if you have any issues, always reach out to us.
Yes, sir. Thank you again.
And this is, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I'd say this is Colt, went out with David and Paul last weekend, or last week, and I guess formally accepted the tractor and took pictures, and it's a beautiful machine. Like you guys said, it's incredibly gracious gift from Ottawa Truck. I think it's kind of neat, sorry, Calmar. Old habit.
No problem.
Call me a townie. I think it's neat that, you know, the piece of equipment made here in Franklin County by Franklin Canyons is going to be put to work, keeping daily life going and possible here. So, again, we appreciate it. Anybody else like to say anything?
This is Commissioner Stottlemyre. Yeah, you know, I think a lot of people don't realize how long and how much they do for the community, and this is a great gesture on their part. And I know there's a lot of Franklin County people and Ottawa people work out there, and it's just a great deal all together, and I want to thank them.
This Commissioner Dunn, I want to thank Calmar and Alan for this great donation to the county. I've been all over the world and it just amazes me when I see these terminal trucks on the docks in Rome and Asia, and it, I said, this gives me a sense of pride when you see that Ottawa truck, Ottawa symbol on these Calmar trucks. It's pretty amazing. So thank you, Alan and Calmar, for doing this for Franklin County.
This is Commissioner Howard, also want to say thank you, we appreciate this.
And Commissioner Dickinson, I would echo all of those thoughts, thank you.
Hey Colt, this is Derek. Something that hasn't been mentioned yet is obviously David and I worked closely on equipment replacement scheduling and budgeting for that. You know, the budget impact of this is huge, and this is a six-figure expense that was, I mean, the truck we have has performed admirably, but it's getting towards the end of its life, and so this was an incredibly timely donation and, you know, it saved the taxpayers. You know, I don't know the exact cost of the truck, but we know it was going to cost us over $100,000 to replace what we have out there, and so the relief that this provides for us in the future is huge. And so certainly at the staff level, we appreciate the donation as well. Thank you.
All right. Well, again, we appreciate you, and we don't need to vote to accept this, this is a no-brainer. All right, well, thank you, thanks again. We're going to move down the agenda items to, move down the agenda to public comment. Is there any public comment today?
I don't have any today.
All right. I do not have, I'm not able to pull up, so you'll have to help me, Janet. Do we have any claim vouchers, tax change orders?
No, the only thing we have is minutes.
Okay, all right, so on our...
And the payroll.
Okay. Do you have a, here it is, I do have that in front of me, so. All right, it would be, today's consent agenda would include consider approving commission meeting minutes for July 22nd, the study session minutes from the 27th, and consider approving payroll for the periods of June 21st to July 20th, at the amount is $1,208,337.37. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Commissioner Dunn, motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, is there a second?
Commissioner Howard, I'll second it.
Commissioner Howard, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes. All right, down to items of business, the first of which is consider applying for the Kansas Department Transportation Off-System Bridge Program. David Lee, our Public Works Director, will explain this item.
Commissioners, this is David. This particular agenda item is exactly like the agenda item that we did about this time last year. If you recall, we applied for, we submitted two applications to KDOT for their local off-system bridge program for a couple of different bridges. We are proposing to submit those same two bridges again this year. We have, the only thing that has changed is we've updated the cost estimates for the bridges, which are reflected in this cover sheet and the supporting documents. So we would just ask for your approval to submit those to KDOT with the hopes that our number is drawn this year. Last year, if you recall, there were, I forget the exact number, but there were a tremendous amount of applications and only a select few were selected. We're hoping that, again, that we're picked this year. So we've got the money set aside for these, for one or both. The chances of both of them being selected are slim to none. So we're hoping for at least one, and we have the money available to do, to pay for it, so.
In the past, we've selected a large project and a relatively smaller one, just to kind of, depending on what the committee may be looking for, what, if they have a smaller hole to fill in their funding, may get lucky that way, has that been the tactic again?
That's exactly right, Commissioner Waymire. We've got, you know, we've got the large bridge on, oh, what road is that? It's near the railroad bridge, or the railroad over on Osburn Terrace. That's a large structure worth over $1 million to rebuild it, and then we've got a smaller structure on Texas Road that kind of fits in that lower category you mentioned.
Good deal. Well, we've had good luck with this program in the past, and hopefully that continues. So would anybody, does anybody have any comments before we look to vote? Would anyone like to make a motion to make application to the Kansas Department of Transportation Local Off-System Bridge Program to replace Bridge Number 17.6-20 and Bridge 16.6-12.1?
This is Don, motion approved.
Is there a second?
Commissioner Dickinson, I'll second it.
All right, sounds like Commissioner Howard got in there.
Commissioner Dickinson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes. All right, our second item of business also lies in the Public Works Department and deals with an agreement between KDOT and Franklin County to construct an emergency relief project on Virginia Road just north of Lane.
Commissioners, this is the project that I've been talking to you about, just right outside of Lane, where in flood events, we lose the edge of the, edge of the road, and this, this project is, was selected by KDOT to create a, instead of us patching it back together every time it floods, this will be a more permanent fix. And we, we were selected and approved for the project. We have already engaged an engineering company, CFS Engineers, to prepare the design, which the field check design should be completed here in mid to late August, and we'll submit that on to KDOT for, to begin the review process with them. This agreement that is before you today formalizes that, that relationship with KDOT. The information contained in it is boilerplate information that we have on all of our KDOT-related projects. So we would ask you to approve the agreement so that we can sign that and get that submitted to KDOT here in the next few days.
Commissioner Dickinson, this is not going to be done until 2021. Will our, will our payment be out of this year or next year?
It will be next year.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Stottlemyre, I'd like to make a motion to support this item, make a motion to authorize execution agreement to KDOT in Franklin County for construction of Emergency Relief Project 30C505601 on Virginia Road just north of Lane. Just a little more background, so you guys know, when, this is a real, been a trouble spot for years and years and years, and I'm glad David has taken on to move it forward. This is the right, an area right there, just north of Towns and Lane, and when there's a flood and that road goes out, we have to use an ambulance service out of Anderson County to serve that end of the county because that road goes out, we're in trouble. So I think this is more than just a road problem, this is also an emergency problem also too that we have there, so I'd like to make that a motion to approve to move forward.
All right, thank you, Don. Anyone like to second Don's motion?
Commissioner Dunn, second.
Commissioner Dunn, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes. All right, our third item of business, concern, deals with the soliciting of bids for the landfill compactor we purchased. Go ahead, David.
Commissioners, this is, you know, we, last week, we approved the purchase of the compactor. The cost of the compactor is quite significant, and one of the options that we have is financing that over a period of time, and this bid will allow us to receive those, the financing options from the various banks that we deal with, and will give us a indication as to which route we need to go, whether we pay for it outright, we pay for part of it plus some financing, or if we finance the whole deal. This will give us more information to be able to make that decision, and so I am asking you to approve the solicitation of bids for the landfill compactor.
Financing, alrighty.
This is Commissioner Dickinson, if you don't have anybody that you know of that will donate this machine, then I will make the motion that we authorize the solicitation of bids to finance the 2020 landfill compactor.
All right, is there a second?
This is Don, I'll second it.
All right, looks like Don got in there.
Commissioner Stottlemyre, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes. All right, our fourth item of business is to review applications for the CDBG funds and Community Development Block Grant Funds and consider for approval awarding said funds. Derek's listed as the person on this item, but I imagine Paul's going to chime in too, so I guess, go ahead, Derek.
Yeah, as you know, this is something we've been working in conjunction with FCDC on to try and direct some of these funds to businesses located outside of the city of Ottawa. Paul's continued to work incredibly hard on distributing these funds, and we have four applications in front of you today, and with that, Paul, to walk you through those four. Go ahead, Paul.
Thank you, Derek. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good.
Commissioner Dickinson, I apologize, we didn't get that compactor donated, maybe next time.
Oh, yeah.
We do have before you today four grants. What the process has turned into on this is, as you recall, we hired a consultant to help us through this process. The consultant reviews these pretty diligently, to make sure we're crossing our Ts and dotting our Is, and so until the consultant actually approves it, we're not bringing these before you. So these have all been approved. The consultant works very closely with the state, and so I feel quite confident that these are, these are very strong requests for funding today. I'll start with the smallest and work our way up. The first one is for cottonwood sharpening. This is a sole proprietorship in Centropolis area, basically sharpening equipment and tools and those types of things. Their request that we can support is only $596. That's basically for inventory and expenses. As I said in my overview, when they do their tax returns, there are certain levels that they're allowed to utilize, so we use those same IRS guidelines on this. It's unfortunate, and I'll share this because you may hear this from some of the constituency out there, and it certainly impacted cottonwood sharpening. When we started this program, the state indicated that we could replace lost income that was properly documented due to COVID. They even went so far as to say, even though the 60-day window for inventory exists, you can replace lost income for a longer period, which we agreed would be 90 days, after the fact, and actually about a week and a half ago, the state reversed their decision, and now they do not allow us to replace lost income for sole proprietorships. So an S corp, an LLC, and all of them can still get lost income, but if you're a sole proprietor, we are unable to replace lost income per their guidelines, which is unfortunate, and I'm not quite clear on the reasoning on that. So if you do hear something from your constituency, I just wanted to give you a heads up on that. But certainly impacted this application, but they are grateful for what we have done and would welcome your approval for $596 grant, CDBGCV grant for cottonwood sharpening. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, it looks like we're going to accept all the applications at once, so...
Okay, okay. The next one is out of Pomona, Leroy's Barbecue. These folks have done a very good job of providing documentation of expenses, and they have certainly been impacted by COVID-19 with closure and reduced traffic and absolutely zero catering coming in. What we have done here is replace their expenses to the tune of $10,181.57. That too has been reviewed by the underwriter and the consultant, and as a result, I'm recommending approval for a grant in the amount of $10,181.57 for Leroy's Barbecue in Pomona. Do you have any questions on that application?
Paul, this is Commissioner Dunn.
Yes, sir.
Was that a sole proprietorship there too, or not?
That is an LLC.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
That was a difference then.
That's exactly right, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay.
The next, next point is, I'm sorry, Colt.
Oh, go ahead, sorry, the delay's getting us.
Okay. The HE Network Services, this is Hoagland. Brian Hoagland is the owner of this business. They have certainly been impacted by COVID-19, and Mr. Hoagland is seeking some relief for expenses and payroll. This is an incorporated business, so it does qualify for payroll replacement. He has met, again, all of the requirements, all of these applicants have met the low-to-moder income threshold, that's the first thing we check, and then we have to work on documentation for expenses and payroll. They've provided payroll reports, they've provided invoices and proof of payment. Again, the consultant underwriter has reviewed this and approved it, and so I bring this to you recommending approval of this grant request in the amount of $15,683. Any questions for me on that one?
Doesn't appear so.
Okay, and the last one is Dream Kitchen and Supply. This is a business they have, with the owner included, that's eight employees, so this is one of our larger, larger impacted, and as a result, you'll see that in the reflection of the grant. Tom Pierce is the owner of Dream Kitchen and Supply. They're LMI, they hit those thresholds, you have to be at 51%, they're at 83%. And they did receive some PPP funding, but we've documented that that was used for other purposes, so we're not duplicating resources. This one was basically one expense item that exceeded the maximum amount that they would be eligible for under our program, based on the size of the company, employees, and that type of thing. They had a billing that was in exceed of $50,000, but the maximum we can don't, we can contribute to an individual business is 50 under our guidelines that you adopted. So the consultant, again, the underwriter, has reviewed this and approved it, and so I'm recommending to the county commission approval of this grant request for Dream Kitchen and Supply in the amount of $50,000.
Paul, this is Don.
Yes, sir.
I don't see an address on this one, on the Dream Kitchens.
Dream Kitchens is... Dream Kitchens is, uh, 4441 Indiana Road.
Okay, thank you.
They're out there by, uh, Centropolis.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
This is Commissioner Dickinson. You wouldn't think it would be so hard to give away money because this is one of those that, at the beginning, I would be questioning the amount that we're giving, but, you know, it, it seems like we're having a hard time giving away. So, um, if, if, and again, because of the amount, I'm glad you have a lot of backup so that we know that this isn't coming back at us. So, we can help them that much. That's awesome.
Thank you. They, just, and, and your question and your comment is timely. I can give you an update. Uh, if you recall, the grant was for 132,000. Uh, we did hire this consultant. That was $6,600 that we'll pay, uh, over the, the process. Um, so with the, with the grants that, if you approve these, with the grants that have been awarded and with what's encumbered that we owe to the consultant, after this morning, we will have a remaining balance of $47,481.31 to award to area businesses. I have six applications in my pipeline right now, representative of Lane, Welsville, Pomona and, and outside of the city limits of Ottawa. Uh, as a result, I'm not accepting any further applications until we see how those six applications kind of flush through. I believe with those applications, we will expend the remainder of the grant. Um, you as a commission have the absolute right to reduce, change. You cannot, uh, increase unless we go back to the underwriter. Um, but if you have concerns about, um, spreading the wealth, for lack of a better word, uh, you certainly have the authority as a, as a commission to do that. So I share with you that update. So you have all the information before you today, before you approve or, or select to approve, uh, the, the applications before you. And I'm happy to answer further questions.
Commissioner Dickinson, what would you recommend? Would you recommend possibly reducing this one a little bit so we can have more left?
Um, I, I, I guess my answer to that, Commissioner, would be I don't think we'll have a problem giving more money away based on what's in the pipeline and, and what's out there. Uh, so if you wanted to reduce that, to spread it, uh, around a little bit, uh, that would certainly be an option for you. And, and I don't think it's, if the concern is, uh, we're gonna have money left over that we're gonna have to send back to the state, I, I don't have that concern. So that, that would be an option, Commissioner.
Alright.
Commissioner Dunn, uh, all those, uh, pending, uh, applications, are they all total up under $47,000?
I can't, I can't answer that, uh, today, Commissioner Dunn, because, uh, the process, as you go through this, is a matter of verifying and document, documenting expenditures. So actually, when the applications come in, we don't have an idea of how much the total is gonna be at the end. Um, I would say I've got a couple of them that are gonna be north of $10,000. Uh, could be three to four of the six, uh, could potentially be north of 10,000, which would certainly utilize and spend that money pretty quickly. Um, if that were the case and we were running out of funds, then my, my recommendations, I would come back to you. I would probably reduce the awards a little bit so we could hope to reward everybody that's in the pipeline at this time.
Commissioner Dickinson, again, if we, uh, like, say, reduce this one to $30,000 and then we get toward the end, can we go back and give them more? No?
No, you can't go back once it's done.
Well, I would, I would like to see us maybe change that to 30,000 just so that we can move that around a little bit.
Other Commissioners' thoughts? I'll go down the, the list. Don, what do you think?
Well, I don't know. It's a tough one. Uh... I understand exactly what's being discussed. I do understand that evidently they've went through the full process and, and they've already got reduced from 70 to 50 because that's all, all we can get. But I understand totally the suggestion. I don't know. I'd like to hear other people's thoughts first.
Alright, Rick?
Yeah, I, I agree with Don. It's kind of a tough call. Um, my thought on this is, uh, this kind of started out, when we started this, it was kind of a first come, first served type thing. Um, they put their, uh, application in. They meet all the requirements. They're one of the larger, uh, businesses. Uh, I, I agree with Ian. I like to share it around, but I think that, uh, we started out with the first come, first served type thing and they've, they've done their work to put it in and it's been approved by all our people that's checking it. So I probably would lean to go with what, uh, has been recommended at the 50,000.
Alright, uh, Roy, what are your thoughts?
Uh, Commissioner Dunn, um, I agree with, uh, Rick and Don. Uh, they, they jumped through all the hoops to do it right. Uh, they were reduced down to the limit and first come, first served is what it is. And everybody, uh, was in the same boat, so I'm, I'm for staying with the 50,000.
Alright, um... They, uh, this applicant did receive PPP funds already?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Firstly, I'd like to, to spread it around, but I, I think, uh, we set a, I mean, personally, I think we kind of set a policy that, uh, and those were the parameters and, and they met it. And, uh, I don't think it would be fair maybe to move the goalposts around either. So, I guess, uh, that being said, I may tend to agree with, uh, Rick and Roy. Uh, Don, you want to circle back to you?
Oh, I'd like to make, I, I understand what Ian's saying totally. But I do feel they jumped through the hoops. They did everything. They, uh, I know it sounds like a lot of money, but, but that's a lot of people too, so, you know, and that's, you know, they gotta keep going and we want them to keep going. So I'm making a motion to approve the application and submit it.
Alright, uh, if I could, Don, uh, just wanna make sure since, um, these aren't government funds and we're gonna be audited and make sure we do everything absolutely perfect. Uh, can I read the, uh, suggested motion for an affirmative? It would be to, uh, accept the attached applications for the CDBG funds and award the recommended amount of funding for each. Is that, uh...
That's my motion.
Alright, thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Commissioner Dickinson, I will...
Thank Commissioner Howard got in there first.
Commissioner Howard, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes, and... Paul Bean, thank you very much for your work on this.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. Alright, staff reports. Let's start off with Derek.
Yeah, um, one thing I wanna, I've got a few things to work through, but, uh, the first, we have Tyler Ellsworth, our bond counsel, on the call. Um, I wanna talk again about the refinancing of the, uh, bonds that were used to pay for the juvenile detention center. As you will recall, we originally solicited bids, weren't particularly happy with, uh, the results that we got. So just last week, we decided to change course and instead try a public offering. Well, in the meantime, um, Kansas State Bank, who you will recall was our only local bidder. The other two bidders were not local. They reached out to our financial advisor with a revised bid. Um, their original bid, um, had an interest rate of about 2.25%, which would have represented a savings to the county of about $250,000. And you'll recall that when we originally set out to do this, we were hoping to be somewhere 30, 340 range. And so we thought, you know, for 80 or 90,000 dollars, let's, let's try to do this as a public offering. Well, they offered to lower their interest rate. And in doing that, um, that would raise our potential savings from 250,000 to about 300,000. So now we're, we're closer to that projected mark. Um, we're to the point now where, you know, if, if we did this as a, a public offering and interest rates stayed about where they are right now, we still think we could probably get 330, 340, somewhere in there. Um, but if the interest rate goes up even a quarter of a percent, uh, then all of a sudden, your, your savings is right around 300K, which is kind of what we have on the table currently, uh, from Kansas State Bank. And so I do wanna give Tyler the opportunity to speak on this a little bit before we kind of have a discussion and discuss the pros and cons of what's in front of us. So Tyler, do you wanna jump in here?
Yeah, I, I don't, thanks, Derek. Uh, good morning, Commissioners. I don't have much to add, um, to the background that you provided here. Um, I think there are some, well, I think there are some policy questions about, um, whether, when you solicit bids, uh, for financing or for anything else, whether it makes sense from a policy standpoint to allow a bidder to submit a revised bid after the fact. Um, so maybe that sets a bad precedent. But on the other hand, as Derek already pointed out, this is, uh, the only local bank that submitted a bid when bids were solicited. Uh, and there's something to be said for working with your local partner there in the community. So, um, happy to answer any additional questions if, uh, there's additional info we can provide.
Yeah, and, and this is Derek again and, and he jumped into what I, I feel like are our considerations. I mean, generally speaking, I am very much of the mindset that when we solicit bids, we give interested vendors the opportunity to put their best bid forward. That's everyone's opportunity to make a competitive bid. And, um, if you choose to, you know, bid something higher than you, you know, than you know you're able to in order to make a little extra profit on it, certainly I understand that's business. I'm not naive enough to think that that doesn't happen. Um, but the question here is, in this instance, because Kansas State Bank is, I mean, we partner with them on a lot of things. Um, do a lot of business with KSB. They were our only local bidder, so it's not like, if you decide in this instance to allow them to revise their bid, we're not doing so at the expense of other local bidders. Um, and so that, those are really the considerations. I will tell you, generally, I am not for allowing bidders to do this. I, I don't think it sets a great precedent in the normal course. You know, if we had multiple local bidders, um, I don't know that I would even be considering this. But in this instance, um, because it's one of our most prominent partners, it's a local entity. At the very least, I think it's worth discussion from the board. So with that, I would love to hear, uh, thoughts from the Commissioners. Thank you.
Tyler, this is Commissioner Dickinson. If we, um, if we go with their bid, is that, will, will the timing be earlier than if we put it back out?
It'll probably be a little bit earlier, yeah. We may save two weeks or so. Um, I don't know that we'll save the full 60 days at this point because we're sort of back and forth. Um, we've, uh, been treading water a little bit, trying to make sure that we're proceeding on the right track here. Um, but at this point, we could likely close on the financing maybe mid-September instead of early October. So, that's my guess.
Uh, this Commissioner Dunn, uh, it sounds almost like an ethical, uh, situation when we let one resubmit a bid and the, and not say anything to the others. So I have a little difficulty in, uh, that sort of situation. I don't know if there's any ramifications for, uh, repercussions for, uh, doing it that way.
I don't, and Tyler, feel free to jump in. I don't think there are literal ethical ramifications, but I do think that the optics of doing this are, are worth considering. I mean, I think the fact that that was your thought off the cuff, Roy, i- is indicative of how this may be perceived. And I, I mean, I, this is a hard one for me and, and which is why, you know, we're having this discussion at the board level. Because I do think that on the one hand, you have an optics problem, which is kind of what you're describing there, Roy. I don't think it represents a literal ethics, like there's no ramifications here. Um, but I think that is a consideration. I think the other consideration is, you know, they are our only local bidder. We try to work with local bidders. We do a lot of business with KSB. Um, and talking with David Artaberry, um, he relayed that he didn't get the impression that KSB was trying to do anything, uh, wrong or that they were literally just, they saw that we were gonna go back to the drawing board and almost thought, you know, well, you know, if we can do this for them and, and try and help them out, then, you know, let's throw that out there and see if that helps them at all. This is what David reported to Tyler and Janet and I. I have not had a discussion. I've not spoke with KSB about this at all. But, but certainly, Roy, there's something to be said for the optics of this. Thank you.
Derek, this is Don.
Go ahead, Don.
Hey, uh, what would happen in the time around or what? If we did it again, but we only made it a bid, accepted bids from Franklin County Banks?
Well, we're kind of going a whole different route with a public offering now. And because it's, we're u- utilizing a different legal mechanism, I, I, I don't know that it would make sense to just limit bids, um, via a public offering to just Franklin County Banks. I mean, if we, I suppose if we went back with the original course of action and did that, we could. And, uh, in all likelihood, KSB would be our only local bid and their bid would be 2%, which is where we're at currently. If that helps.
That's what I meant, Derek.
Okay.
They would likely be disadvantaged in the same way though that, uh, I mean, everybody's now seen their bid. Um, on the original private placement, how many interested parties did we have? Two? Is that correct?
I believe there were three.
There were three?
This is Commissioner Dickinson. Was KSB the lowest? I don't remember.
Hey, Colt, before I answer that, why don't you finish your thought?
Yeah, uh, so the one was, the third one was quite a bit higher. The one that was, uh, I guess, on paper less, didn't qualify. It was, it didn't meet the parameters at all, right? So we would've had to either gone back and worked with them in a similar way or, I guess our other option was to work with somebody regardless. Um, or take Kansas State Banks and Kansas State Bank ended up lowering their rate. I mean, that's, I guess, another way of, I guess, if we're worried about policy, public perception, we would've had to, you know, we, we were working with the lower one. We would've had to gone back and renegotiated after the letters have been opened too.
Yeah, and Colt, this is Derek and, and Tyler can probably explain in a little more detail exactly what the issues were, but you were exactly right. There were three bids. Kansas State Banks was the second lowest, the first lowest. We had, uh, pretty severe concerns about whether we would even, I don't think we could have accepted their bid because the way they cast it. And Tyler, could you, uh, give a little more background on exactly what the issues with that bid were?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. There were at least two issues. The most significant issue was the bid from BOK, which was the lowest bid, was proposing to treat the financing as a loan instead of as a bond. And under Kansas law, neither the PBC nor the county can simply obtain a loan. It's not financing structure available to Kansas municipalities. So that would have been the biggest challenge that we would have faced in working with BOK to try and get them to understand that we didn't have the ability to offer this to them as a loan. That was, that was the most significant cause for concern. The other item that was of some concern was that they said that their rate was good for 30 days, but our anticipated closing date at that point, probably 45 days out, we were concerned about their rate being affected in the timeframe that we had for our calendar for speaking. So that, for those reasons, felt like BOK bid was essentially non-responsive, and we had concerns about being able to reach a deal if we tried to go back. So Kansas, in a nutshell, Kansas State Bank, three bids that were received originally was the lowest responsive bid at 2.25%. And they've now come back, that they're willing to offer this at 2%.
And I think that's kind of my position. You know, we have done this publicly in a competitive way, and Kansas State Bank, you know, won that process. Now they're coming back with an even lower rate, so I guess I don't necessarily see the perception problem in that regard. But did you have a comment, Commissioner Dickinson?
I did, I did wonder, if we sent, put this out to a broker, can they put a bid out?
That's, that's a, that's a very good question, and that's essentially what the public offering route does. You solicit bids from underwriters who are effectively acting as brokers for the financing, and the underwriters parcel debt out into separate bonds and seek kind of secondary purposes. So that's exactly the structure that we would have talked about with the week ago, based on the results of the private placement and the three bids.
This is Commissioner Dunn. After the discussion, I think Kansas State Bank would be, would be my choice to go with them.
And this is Derek. To be clear, I don't, I'm just looking for kind of a consensus among the board today. I'm not so much looking at any kind of formal motion. I want to sit back down with David and Tyler and make sure that we have in front of you exactly what we need to have in front of you in order to do this efficiently. And so if you, basically, if the five of you can give us a consensus, and if that's KSB, then that's great, then we will get back on that timeline again, and, and we'll be back in front of you, I'm sure, next week. And, and, yeah, Colt, I think, I appreciate, I appreciate your thoughts, and I think that if you view this from the lens of while we had a lower interest rate, it was a non-responsive bid, and we've seen that quite a bit over the years, that we'll have a bid that looks good, but it's truly not responsive, and it just gets cast out. And that is where we're at here. So if KSB won the process to begin with, and they, you know, they came back even lower as an incentive for us to, to stay on this course of action, then I do think you overcome your optics issue. Thank you.
Commissioner Howard, you have thoughts?
Yeah, I listened to what Derek says and Tyler and David's thoughts, I would probably go with KSB, too. It all makes sense what he has just explained about the other bid actually not being a legit bid either, so yeah, I'd be okay with going forward with KSD or KSB.
All right. Lost my place. I think Don, have you got a chance?
Yeah, move forward with the deal.
You're happy with the opposite of Kansas State Bank? All righty. All right. And IAN, did you get a chance to speak?
I think that moving in the other direction, we might, we might save, you know, $25,000 to $30,000 more, but chances are it'll be pretty much the same. This way, we do have a local bank, so I don't have a problem moving forward.
And there's, there's no risk of something happening in the meantime as well?
Hey, Colt, before we, we move on, let me ask Tyler, I suppose, do you, do you want a motion from the board, Tyler, today? Do you think we're ready for that? Just officially accepting KSB's bid, or do we need to sit down with David and come back in a week and do that?
Um, I think we're ready. I think we're ready for a motion to authorize staff to proceed with discussions with Kansas State Bank. I think we can do that, and then that will actually save us a week in terms of getting this done, because we can start discussions with Kansas State Bank about putting the bond documents together. I think we're ready for that.
Okay. Well, with that, Colt, then, I'll let you do your thing, but yeah, we would, we would look for a motion.
All right. Tyler, would you mind giving us an example of what an affirmative motion to that extent would be, just to make sure it meets your needs legally?
Yes, yes, absolutely. The motion would be to authorize staff and your financial advisor and bond official to proceed with negotiations with Kansas State Bank regarding a private placement or refunding the PBC revenue bonds based on Kansas State Bank's revised interest rate of 2%.
All right. Thank you, I appreciate that. Would anyone like to make a motion to that extent?
This is Don, I'll make that motion.
All right, thank you, Don. You have a second?
This is Dunn, second?
All right.
Commissioner Dickinson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. All right. Well, we're still on staff reports, and we're still with Derek, so go ahead, Derek.
Tyler, thank you very much, and we'll be in touch.
Absolutely. Thanks, everyone.
Yeah, thanks Tyler.
All right, a couple of things. One, I both on the CDBG discussion and then this tax discussion, you guys, five of you, for what it's worth, I feel like are doing an incredible job. I appreciate the, the discussions. You don't get enough credit, I don't think, as county commissioners for the thoughtful discussion that you have on items, and so, especially the way...
Hang on, Derek, Derek, you're breaking up.
Yeah, sorry, I thought it was just mine. It's getting real, real choppy, Derek.
Okay.
Hey, and he was saying good things about us, too, so please...
Yeah.
Am I still cut now?
No, it's a lot better. You start, start over with, you guys do a good job, would you?
Well, no, I, I feel like you just had two good discussions, both on the CDBG funds and then the public offering, and I appreciate that. It, it's not an easy time to be a, a public servant, but there are a lot of us that get paid very well to do this, and as county commissioners, that's, that's not the case. And, and I, for what it's worth, I think you all do a tremendous job, and I appreciate the thoughtful discussion that you have. And I know right now that, that you're getting a lot of calls and emails, and I know that so many of them aren't pleasant calls to take. So for what it's worth, you know, those of us who work for you appreciate what you're doing, and I think you're doing a great job, and I think today has been a great example of that. The Flint Hills Advisory Committee, we will name Brian Patton here a couple of years ago to serve on that. His term is up in November, and he has been reaching out regarding appointing a replacement. I have sent all of you an email on this. I, I heard back from IAN, who volunteered to sit on it. I think, you know, that, that's perfectly fine with me, but I wanted to make sure that none of you had anyone else you had in mind, and that we were okay with appointing or recommending IAN.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint IAN. Don?
All right. Somebody like to make a second?
Commissioner Howard, I'll second it.
Commissioner Dunn, how do you vote?
Oh, I was going to make a statement before we voted, but that's, that's fine. I reached out to Steve Geis to take it out back, and Painted Lady, Bed Breakfast, and I never heard back from him. I just mentioned it, and I didn't hear back from him, so. I'll say, yes, for IAN, yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Abstain.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes, and I know Brian, I've talked to him about this. One thing I guess kind of know about this board, it sunsets, the board goes away, I think, next year, and I think for the last year, couple of years, there hasn't been a bit of business that really pertained to Franklin County. All the construction and projects are on the far west end of the trail. Brian was a great board member, and I think attended almost all the meetings, and it's something he's passionate about, but to his own, you know, his own words, that it wasn't at this point horribly, you know, didn't pertain to Franklin County, a lot of the business that was going on, so. Anyways, go ahead, Derek.
All right, I'm on a different phone here. Can you hear me better on this one?
Yeah, sounds great.
Okay. Couple of maintenance projects, next remodel. We have our drawing back from our architect. Brandon and I still need to sit down and look at it. I know there were a couple of things that he said, you know, we might need to adjust, but by and large, I know he's pleased with it, so wants him and I have the opportunity. We'll probably be in front of you with it, and I'll send it to all of you in advance, but the next step in the project will be going ahead and soliciting bids for the actual remodel based on that drawing. And so, and it won't cost us anything to solicit bids, the board will still have the opportunity to, you know, if the bids are, are higher than you're comfortable with, to put the project on hold. But I do know that, you know, my staff, and certainly I, am anxious to move forward, if at all possible. I think, you know, this space is gonna, gonna really help us. And then I know, you know, we've talked at length about Paul moving in, and I think Paul Bean is anxious to see the project completed as well, so that's where that is. We mentioned last week the Slurry Coat project out at the Annex, and I emailed all of you after the fact. We talked about it moving forward, and we have already solicited and accepted a bid on that. Vance Brothers won that bid, and they are looking at performing that sometime in August, they're thinking the second or third weekend, so that is very much in the pipeline. Transitioning to COVID-related items, and Janet and I are both answering a lot of questions about Spark Funds. We've been working closely with, primarily with local municipalities and school districts. As that's, as we've continued to work through this process, what we're finding is that this first phase is really focused on local taxing entities, so have received a lot of questions there. We actually, today is the deadline for those municipalities to get us their, both their lists for reimbursement, as well as their direct aid spending plan. And from here, we have until August 15th to work with our consultant and put together a cohesive direct aid spending plan, as well as a full reimbursement list that would comprise not only our expenses, but every municipality's. And so that's a big project that we'll be working on over the next couple of weeks. We've also worked, the Health Department primarily, myself, we've been working with school superintendents on a COVID response plan. We had a good meeting with them last week, we have another meeting scheduled for tomorrow. I really feel for superintendents right now. School reopening, you know, you talk about big projects, that, that is a huge project, and how to do that, and how to have plans in place for when COVID invariably starts, you know, spreading through schools. And that is what we're really trying to help them with. We don't really view it as the county's role to tell them how to open their schools and, you know, whether or not to do block scheduling, and when they should open, and then they have school boards and their own staff to answer those questions. But what we do view our role is, is how to respond when cases of COVID start emerging. And so, you know, Nick and his staff, along with Casey, have worked incredibly hard on putting together a response plan, very happy with where that is. And we're gonna sit down with the superintendents tomorrow and really start refining that. And that's really all I have, so questions, I'll turn this over to Nick.
I have one question, this is Commissioner Dickinson. For the school districts to, like, revamp their classrooms, to give some barriers, and be able to isolate different stations, is that part of what we can use that money for?
Yeah, I mean, absolutely, and, and I have not personally seen, and, and I'll start looking at that after today, I have not seen their requests for reimbursement or their direct spending ideas, but yes, that, that has been communicated to them over and over. That is the perfect use of these funds, so sanitation stations and literal barriers and, and, you know, distant thermometers, and yeah, all of that is fair game, and, and my expectation is that, you know, they utilize these funds for that, and I think they're going to, so.
Commissioner Dunn, Derek, is HR gonna move back to Suites 1 and 2, too?
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, that, that, their location, yeah, they will move back in there.
Okay, okay.
All right. Well, let's move on to Nick. Are you on, Nick?
Morning, Commissioner, this is Nick. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Derek talked about, we have been working very hard with the, the school districts to make sure that they know what our response plan will be for COVID response. Derek did a great job planning that, so. The other thing, we've been focusing hard, and I think are very fortunate to see that there have been no cases of residents in nursing facilities. We still continue to work very hard with them to have weekly meetings, discuss what their visitation plans are like, and I will tell you that as we have seen more and more cases of COVID, they have been proactive in tightening up their visitation policies. So they are doing a good job working with us to, to, we're informed in keeping their residents safe. One of the big topics Casey, myself, Derek have been talking about, it's been, I know on social media, the state of Kansas... on social media, uh, the state of Kansas can only, uh, report numbers for the addresses in which, uh, written on the, on the papers that are sent in. So for example, if somebody had lived in Franklin County and now lives in Johnson County, but the last address KDHE has on file is Franklin County and they don't make the changes, those numbers will be reported in Franklin County and vice versa. If somebody lived in Miami County, that could be reported there to reported to them to change them. So we work every day with the state of Kansas on making sure those numbers are as accurate as possible. I will tell you that it's an overwhelming thing for the state. They have specifically put one person on that, uh, so we're not getting the changes made as quick as we, we'd like to see. But there will be times when our numbers will not represent the same thing that's on KDHE and it's just because they are either reporting individuals that are not in our community. There could be multiple addresses or even multiple birthdays for certain individuals. So with that, we were vetting that at, at the Health Department level and reporting to the state, but they're not able to time, in a timely manner, change that. So I, I wanted to tell you guys that in case you're asked, our numbers are reflecting what we see. We vetted those numbers from what we get from the state. The other thing we do notice is if somebody gets tested out of our county and that, and they do not report that to the state in a timely fashion, you may get those two or three weeks after the positive test comes in, the negative test. So there is a, if not testing being done, there is a timeline that some places are not meeting to report that. So a lot of different things that we're trying to do to keep numbers accurate, get people informed, but as there's more tests, more, like, is doing testing, we're seeing that there's some, some shortfalls there. Uh, good news that I did get is, I've said this multiple times and I hope this is accurate, but, uh, we will have rapid testing in our community starting, uh, mid-August. I know that OFP has ordered an abundance of them in hopes to get some. We, uh, at the Health Department level have ordered some to help us with some contact tracing, but, uh, we should have rapid testing. Where that'll look is within 15 minutes of, of applying the test, we should know of a positive. Um, like every rapid test, there is a, there's not a, an accuracy on positives. Um, if it's positive, it's positive, but there will be, I think, a 15% margin of false negatives. So with that, there's discussion on what we're gonna do to vet that and I think as this plays out, we'll be having a, a plan for what to do with that. But it is on the forefront of actually getting something that's more rapid here in Franklin County. Uh, as we walk forward through COVID, we're on the, uh, horizon of flu season and with that, working with OFP, they've been a great partner with helping us swab, with helping us obtain samples. A really good partner to work with. There's concern on their staffing of being able to continue, um, obtaining samples for us for COVID during flu season due to them being busy with that. So we are working on a plan for my staff to take over some of the swabbing, um, and sample obtaining for COVID. So we will be training our staff. We'll probably reach out to some other departments to see if we can obtain personnel to do this, but we will probably by September be, uh, doing the majority of the swabbing ourselves. With that, we have hired one LPM, one RN to, uh, assist with the COVID response plus a, uh, a clerk to help us keep track of the numbers and, and help, uh, vet that stuff as it comes in. We, uh, we, we continue, uh, to work and drive forward, so that, that's what I have on the COVID response in the Health Department. Are there any questions on any of that?
This is Commissioner Dickinson. I know that we've been, reached out by, uh, a constituent with concern about not being able to visit a loved one in a nursing home. And I think we need to reiterate that nursing homes are not, um, the, the liability, their liability was not taken away, so that's one of the reasons they're a little bit slower to do that.
You know, to just speak on what you said there a little bit more, is that I, I have had a lot of people that are, a few, a, a good group of people that have reached out concerned about the same thing, not being able to visit loved ones. Talking on my Tuesday phone call with, uh, the nursing facilities, a lot of them had to scale back because family was not following the social distancing that they expected. They were taking their masks off. They were getting close to the loved ones and, and, you know, one, one case in a nursing facility, we've seen in other counties, just overtake those facilities, weaken immune systems, a lot of health problems. And, and that's something that, that we, I, I'm glad that they did take that stance and say, if you can't follow the rules, we're gonna stop having visits. I know it's hard on the mental health of these patients, but we've gotta keep it out of them.
All right. Thanks for the update, Nick. Let's go to the sheriff.
Yeah, this is, this is Jeff. Um, updates I have is that, um, we have received two of our, uh, new vehicles and we have three ordered. Two of them are in, one of them is getting ready to be built. Uh, there has been some delay in manufacturing, so, um, but we, what we went with this year was the Dodge Durango. Um, you may recall, uh, I believe I've said previously that the Durango, um, uh, came in much lower than what we currently have in the, uh, uh, the Ford interceptor model. So we did go with those. They're getting ready to go down to, uh, to the, uh, upfitter to get, to get all the equipment and everything put on those. So, um, it should be, should not be much longer, uh, when we will see those out and about and, but you may notice a, a difference because of your Dodges instead of Fords for, for these three. Um, let's see, since I've been sheriff, I have been, uh, handing out, uh, pocket constitutions and, um, there's been an uptick in, in my request for those, so, uh, we did get more in, so if any of the commissioners or anyone, uh, wants some of those or a civic organization that would like some, we do have more of those in and, uh, they're available, uh, free of charge to the public. Our jail population has, uh, has increased, uh, steadily and we are, um, in the high 60s right now. Um, but we are still, um, able to maintain our processing and our procedures as far as the quar- uh, high quarantining and keep, kinda keeping people separated, uh, during that first phase, um, when that does happen. Part of a challenge that we are dealing with, um, as well, um, with our jail count is that we have, uh, inmates that have been sentenced to, uh, Department of Corrections, but the, um...
I lost them.
Me too.
EOC, um, but we are not authorized to go take them until mid-September. And so, um, we're still trying to figure out what that means for us as an organization, um, as far as any medical expenses, if we, uh, are gonna be getting paid for, um, housing those inmates, um, in our facility, um, that we don't have any clear answers, but it is just something that we're dealing with, just so, um, you are all aware. Um, there is a delay getting people to, uh, to the state prisons. So, um, if any of you have any questions for me, then I'm happy to answer.
This might be off the wall, is it, Don? Is there any way, Derek, that those kinda costs the county is incurring due to COVID with the jail, that it would be something to be looked at? Are you there?
Argument that that's reimbursable.
Can y'all hear me?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, I'm having, uh, my phone giving up here. Uh, I think, who do we have next on the list? Uh, good, they get the sheriff's done, let's go down to Sari. Are you on?
Good morning, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, go ahead.
Can you hear me? Okay, um, thanks. I just wanted to say, um, Nick always does a great job of, you know, giving HR kudos in the Commissioner meetings and that is always very, very much appreciated, but I wanted to share the credit and recognize my staff as well. So I did put together some things that just let you know what's going on.
I lost her.
And another kudos to Cassie is she just recently graduated from Leadership Franklin County. So, um, she participated in her own time to go to city council meetings of other, um, cities in Franklin County and do other things, so really appreciate her doing that. And then also for Christina, one thing that's just really been keeping her busy lately is recruitment and hiring and onboarding. And so I asked her to put together the statistics for the last five months on how many people we've hired and she said that we've hired 27 new employees with July being the busiest month, having 11 new hires and...
I lost her.
...hired and then both she and Cassie are involved in a lot of administrative work to get them processed and, and there's benefits. So anyway, she's been very busy with that. And then just one last side note, just we appreciate Casey because Casey started putting our positions on Facebook, I think it was maybe about a month ago, and looking at the views on our website, um, usually it could be, it could range from 10 up to 60, um, some days maybe even 80. But last week, after Casey had posted that, we set a new record and we had over 400 portal views, so that was pretty exciting. So I'd be happy to answer any questions or if I don't know the answer, I'll get back to you with the answers.
This is Don.
This is Commissioner... Go ahead, Don.
Yeah, this is Don, just, uh, hopefully someday we can get back in there and, and everybody's face to face, just keep up the good work.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
This is Commissioner Dickinson. I think that HR is kinda one of those unsung heroes that you only hear about them if they aren't doing a good job. So we do appreciate, especially since you've been so new, but you have just really gotten into, um, the position and we do appreciate it. And your staff.
Thank you.
All right. Can the Commissioners hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. I think Colt's having pretty major telephone issues, so, um...
I'm back now. I'm back now. It's coming and going really bad. I'm trying to get signed, signed in on my cell phone, but it won't let me talk there, so, right now I haven't. It sounds like the internet's, uh, uh, slowing down on this end, but, uh, thank you, Sari. Um, David Lee, are you on?
Yes. Can you hear me?
I can.
All right. So, um, our crews have been primarily working on the Haskell Road Low Water Crossing. Uh, we, we're off to a good start, uh, late last week and of course the rain, um, uh, Sunday and Monday, uh, slowed us down a little bit, but as soon as, uh, the water goes down, we'll get back onto that project. Uh, in the meantime, we've been, uh, and will continue to, uh, work on clearing debris from our, our bridges around the county. That's a, uh, a big job and it's gonna take us quite some time to get all of that taken care of, but we'll, uh, we'll continue on with it. Uh, on the Colorado Road Bridge, uh, repair, High Plains has been working on that. They've got, uh, two locations, uh, patched on the, uh, east side, which would be the one, the northbound lanes. Uh, so that concrete is, is curing, we're trying to stay off of it. We are, in fact, probably, uh, as we speak, we've got crews out there right now that are pulling the asphalt up off the bridge so that we can, uh, we know we've got at least one more location. By removing the asphalt, we'll be able to check the entire bridge for any other locations on that deck that need to be, uh, repaired. Once, uh, excuse me, once we have everything repaired and that concrete has had an opportunity to set up, we will, uh, overlay that. Uh, we are, um, investigating whether or not we're gonna put asphalt or a thin concrete, uh, layer over that. Um, but as soon as, uh, we have a decision, we'll, we'll move forward with that. Um, in the meantime, we have closed the bridge as of this morning and set up a detour of the site. Uh, we need to keep, uh, traffic off of it as much as possible to allow that concrete to, uh, to set up and, and cure the way that it needs to. Uh, kinda feel like the short-term inconvenience for the folks that use that bridge, uh, is gonna be offset by having a quality structure that, uh, folks will be able to use for years to come without, uh, without issues. Uh, something else that we're working on, um, is getting the bid documents together for, uh, the pavement project. Um, uh, we were, we're a little bit behind on that. Uh, we had one of our staff out sick that was, uh, really working on getting the locations and quantities put together, uh, but I should be finishing that up today and, uh, be checking quantities with, uh, the superintendent tomorrow, uh, and have this on and it, for an agenda item next week, uh, so that we can move forward with that project. Uh, and the last thing, um, the, oh, I think I mentioned a week or so ago that we were, uh, that a citizen contacted us about, uh, doing a, putting up some speed limit signs on Shawnee Road, uh, east of K-33. Um, I have solicited and, and gotten a proposal from SES Engineers to do a traffic study on that site, uh, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna move forward with that. Uh, it's a couple thousand dollars for them to do the study and all the associated work and come up with the recommendations for that. Um, once they're done, we will have good information, solid information to be able to make a decision on whether or not we want to, uh, put up a speed limit sign and what that speed limit sign should, should be posted at in that area. Um, so that's kinda what we're working on. Uh, we should also have, um, be seeking approval for a motor grader next week and we'll probably go ahead and put the, uh, the financing for that grader on as well so that we can, uh, move forward with that. And that's, that's all I have at this, at this time.
Uh, this is Commissioner Dunn, David.
Yes, sir.
Uh, you had a break in and that's transfer station, are you changing, uh, procedures out there or how you work in that?
Yes, we are, uh, we have changed the procedures, um, as far as when we collect the money, uh, and what we do with that. We're also looking into a couple of other security measures to, uh, help, uh, prevent this sort of, uh, occurrence in the future.
Okay.
Uh, this is Commissioner Sotomayor. Uh, David?
Yes, sir.
I don't think most of the Commissioners don't realize, but this project down on Virginia Road has been a pain for 20 years and been mandated and, you know, so I commend you for getting this taken care of and, and basically allowing us to get it fixed at a minimal cost to the county and, uh, I'm just glad that you proceeded with this and, and made it come, made it work. Thank you.
I appreciate that. It, it, uh, certainly not, uh, we couldn't do it without our partners with KDOT, so they, they've been extremely helpful as well.
This is Derek. I think Colt's phone went completely out, so I'll quarterback us through the rest of this. Are there any other questions for David?
Just one comment. This is Commissioner Dickinson. I was thinking the other day about, uh, one of our constituents... about, uh, one of our constituents that wanted us to have a study session on ditches. But I think that your department absolutely knows that ditches are a priority. And when they're, it's, you're doing work in an area, ditches is definitely a part of that. It, um, um, we don't need to tell you anymore, uh, what needs to be done. So we appreciate you taking care of those, too.
Thank you.
All right. Janet, do you wanna go ahead?
Yes, thank you. Commissioners, last week we discussed the canvas meeting, um, after the election. And I believe we, um, set that for the 10th of August, which is a Monday. And you would have a normal Monday study session that day. Um, however, after some consideration, um, made by the Secretary of State's office, it looks like our timeline is gonna need to be pushed back for that. Um, we have to complete, uh, an audit that was, um, last year was the first year that we had to do that audit. And we have to give the Secretary of State's Office 48 hours to review our audit results and before we can hold the canvas. And so if with your approval, I'd like to move the canvas back to the 12th, then we can just hold the canvas immediately following your, um, regularly scheduled Wednesday meeting, if that, if that's agreeable to you guys.
Uh, Janet, where are you gonna hold the canvas? Is that the courthouse?
We'll hold it upstairs in the courtroom. Again, there'll be plenty of room. Um, as you know, we have large tables up there. We can spread out and, um, be separated from each other. And hopefully, uh, we will have everything organized and ready to go, and it shouldn't take too long.
Okay.
So do I hear any objections to moving that to the 12th?
I'm not hearing anything, Janet. So I would say go ahead.
Okay, sounds perfect. Um, I don't have anything else. Just a reminder, election day is next Tuesday, the 4th, and, um, we'll be working hard and, um, answering questions. We did wrap up mailing out advanced ballots this morning. Um, the deadline to receive those requests was yesterday, and we are getting the last few stragglers out the door today. And, um, we'll be ready to in-person vote on Tuesday.
Janet, uh, Janet, this is Roy, uh, the 5th. Uh, we're gonna do the, the budget hearing, right?
Yes, that meeting is the 5th at 6:00 PM in the, um, annex commission chambers.
Okay.
Right. Any more questions for Janet? Hearing none. Let's go to Commissioner Comments and Board Reports. Let's start with you, Don.
Uh, I've got two city meetings in the couple days, so I'll be able to report more during next meeting. I don't really have anything at this time.
All right. Thanks, Don. Uh, Commissioner Howard?
I don't, I don't have anything at this time.
All right. Commissioner Dickinson?
Um, same with me. I really don't have anything. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Dunn?
Uh, yes, I went to the, uh, East Central Kansas area on aging, uh, Friday with an in-person meeting, uh, uh, down, down there and, uh, talked about the end of the 2020 budget and talked about the 21st, 2021 budget. And a lot of, a lot of their programs, uh, kind of, uh, depends on what, what the federal government does on, on their funding. So, uh, uh, talked about the Senior Care Act and CARES 2021 and some other policies, but mainly we just, we stuck with the, uh, the, uh, budgets for, uh, next year. And they're still, uh, looking for, uh, a final cost on building a garage out there at the Rad Edge Patch out there in the industrial park, North Industrial Park for, uh, their vehicles, uh, kind of nail down a, a cost for that so they can, uh, go forward with that. But, uh, that's all I have is this, uh, that one meeting.
All right. Thanks, Roy. And before I ask for a motion to adjourn, Colt, I wanna make sure you're in fact not on the call at this point. All right. I don't believe he is. If there's nothing else, then, then would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Don.
Commissioner Dunn, second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, the meeting's adjourned.